I do. I have one extra. That's the priority button. I never use that. I never have to. Morning, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for the singing of our national anthem. All right. Item 1.0, additions to the agenda. Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor Schuler, all in favor? That is carried. 3.0, corrections or amendments to the June 3, 2015 regular meeting of council minutes. Any corrections or amendments? Counselor Bossert, I'd be disappointed if I didn't.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under 9.3, the development permit for detached garage variance, it was, 1, 2, 3, 5th paragraph, it mentions that Mrs. Winship's advised council that her sewer line was replaced August of 2015. I believe that's supposed to be August of 2014. There ends my correction, sir.
Thank you. And I believe you're correct. Anything further? All right. I'll take a motion to adopt the June 3, 2015 regular meeting of council minutes as corrected. Counselor Bossert, all in favor? That is carried. All right. Item 5.0, community spotlight, the Alberta Genealogical Society, Connie Stuhl. Welcome.
Oh, with the green ones on. Thank you. So hello, my name is Connie Stuhl, and I'm the president of the Drayton Valley branch of the Alberta Genealogical Society. The Drayton Valley branch of the Alberta Genealogical Society, or AGS, consists of a small group of like-minded individuals who promote their interest in genealogy and genealogical research, or family tree research. The Drayton Valley branch is one of 11 branches throughout the province and has access to resources to assist others in their family tree research. We meet on the 3rd Wednesday of each month with the exception of July, August, and December at the Wishingell Apartments. Our library consists of books, indexes, and CDs that assist members on the methodology of their research. By being a member of the AGS, they also have access to the resources at the main library. Throughout the year, we also host small programs, such as when we celebrated our 20th anniversary and had Paul Sporel speak on the military and displayed some of the artifacts that he has gathered over the years. Other meetings, we get together to discuss what we have researched to date and any brick walls we may have encountered. The group then discusses how we can break down those brick walls and look in a direction, another direction for the information we seek. We have also visited the Family History Centre that is located at the local Mormon church. At the Family History Centre, we have free access to ancestry.com and other databases to aid in our research. This centre is open every Wednesday from 7 till 9 p.m. You do not need to be a member of the church to access the centre, and the staff is very helpful. Each March, we hold a workshop, usually at the Norquest College. There have been various topics in the past, such as European genealogical research, beginners' research, and our most recent presenter talked about what is new on ancestry.com and familiesearch.org. We were able to use the computer lab for this session, which allowed attendees to conduct some research online under the guidance of the presenter. Our group records the births, deaths, and marriages, and has published a book and CD of the indexes from the Pembina News advertiser from 1954 to 1965, the Drayton Valley banner 1966, and the Western Review from 1966 to 2004. We continue this today. We have conducted a research from queries received. One of our most recent queries came from a gentleman in England who was looking for information on the Brownbill family that lived in the Drayton Valley area years ago, which is surprising. Usually, we think about going the other way. When I brought this query to our monthly meeting, it was very interesting that two of our members knew the individuals being researched. One member was a hairdresser who worked at the lodge and cut the hair of Mr. Brownbill. Another member and her family are living on the farm where Mr. Brownbill once lived. We were able to provide the English gentleman with some facts, newspaper articles, information from the history books of the area, and an aerial photo of the farm. He was very thankful and excited to receive this information. We have also recorded the cemeteries in our area, and an index is available on the Alberta Genealogical website. Occasionally, we receive queries from those searching this database as well, looking for additional information. We recently revisited the Anglican Cemetery downtown as part of our program to demonstrate what additional information can be found in a cemetery. Looking at the different types of headstones and some of the images that are displayed on them tell more about the individual that is buried there. Many times, other members of their family are buried nearby, and may include the graves of young children that may not be listed elsewhere. During our visit, we noticed that some of the graves are in bad shape. Headstones are leaning or moved a bit, and then some parts of the ground is sinking in areas. I understand from one of our members that a few years ago, the town of Drayton Valley was working on parts of the cemetery to improve the grounds, but this has stopped. It would be nice if this was continued to make the cemetery a more pleasing place to visit. Thank you for this opportunity to highlight our group to Town Council. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much, Connie. Is there a website or phone number or something that people can perhaps contact the society at?
Yes, if you go to abgenealogy.ca, that's the Alberta Genealogical Society website, and there's a link to our branch on there. We're also on Facebook.
Oh, very good. It's, I guess, those of us who are part of the tail end of the baby boom generation have a particular interest in genealogy and where we come from and that sort of thing. Members of my family have been deeply involved in that kind of research, and it's really opened our eyes to the, you know, where we come from and, you know, just the family history generally.
For sure.
Not that we're getting any older, of course. Any questions, comments? I'll start with Counselor Schuler.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. It's actually, I think, kind of fitting that you're here today. Council has embarked on a project that we would like to see the community get involved with, and that is, part of it is capturing digitally, in both audio and potentially video, the history of Drayton Valley and the stories that people, you know, that live in Drayton Valley, grew up here, even people that moved in and, you know, only spent a short time, we'd like to hear their stories and capture those. And, you know, which all plays part in, you know, in our history and where we came from. There's a lot of community members out there that have been around since the inception of the town and, you know, when this area first started to be settled. And, you know, unfortunately, yes, we all are getting older, and, you know, a lot of them have some very interesting stories to tell about, you know, the development of the area.
For sure.
And we want to capture that. So we will be reaching out to your organization very soon here to embark on that project. That's one phase of the project, at least. Another is to make sure that we have, again, in form of digital, all the copies of the newspapers from the very beginning. So we want to make sure that that's saved and preserved for future generations.
For sure. One item that you may find interesting is Telus, who used to be Alberta Government Telephones, has donated all the telephone books back to the start, to the Medicine Hat branch. So they have them in a storage locker right now, but they will be available for research. So we could probably get a listing of members who had telephones back in the early days.
Excellent. That's fitting, though I work for Telus, I was not aware of that. So thank you for educating me on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent. Counselor Bossert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming in, Connie. I was able to attend your 20th anniversary there last fall and see Paul's amazing military collection. I'm not a military aficionado, but I really did enjoy the evening as I am also very interested in genealogy research, did some for my own family about a year ago, and found some roadblocks. So I really appreciate the work that the society is doing to keep alive the memory of those that came before us in our community. I was recently privileged enough to go back to Europe and get in touch with my Scandinavian roots again after how many generations, brought home a little Viking, and even able to touch on some clan lands of some of my fellow councillors in Scotland. And until we have that opportunity, those things don't become very real to us. But having the ability to research and to go back and to find out who our great-grandparents were and how they impacted the area that they chose to call home is, it's really important. And I hope that there is some way that your society is also reaching out to the younger generation, because as the mayor mentioned, it doesn't seem very pressing to those that are under 30, shall we say, to find those things out. So thank you for your work that's continued. We will continue to work on our cemetery plan. We want those to be beautiful places in our community, and thank you for the work that you do.
And thank you for mentioning about the youth. The Alberta Genealogical Society has just passed a motion to reduce the fees for young adults and students. There's also, one of the members is developing workbooks for students, starting with kindergarten all the way up, and they'll be making these available to schools and libraries across the province once it's finished. So that will be exciting.
Very good. Anything further? Counselor Naddo.
I just want to say thank you for coming in as well. I wasn't able to attend the 20th, and I was very disappointed because genealogy is something that it's, I'm very passionate about. And having recently been to PEI, and I got to touch the grave of the very first Macintosh that came over from Scotland was a huge deal for me, and one of my fellow councillors in the mayor saw me, tears in my eyes, because it's very moving to see where you come from and how that, that, to bring home to tell my kids was a very moving experience. But I just wanted to touch on the cemetery plan, and Counselor Bossert had mentioned it as well. We did embark on it this year, so expect changes, and we are reviewing everything. So we want to make sure it's, every space where our loved ones are are honoured within the community. So I think you'll see some really great changes within the cemetery plan, and we're hoping to have that within the next year or so, so.
Yes, and I was involved in that initial meeting, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much for coming in and sharing the story of the Genealogical Society with us.
You're very welcome. Thank you for inviting me.
Not at all. Item 6.0, delegations. We have, 6.1 is the Max Centre, Wayne Turner. Looking resplendent in retirement, or semi-retirement.
Yeah, I think it's busier now than when I was teaching, but, God. Thank you very much for allowing me in here, Mr. Mayor, and fellow councillors, and all of the members of this assembly. Interesting, just to comment on what Connie was mentioning, it's kind of interesting with the use of the internet now, how sometimes we accidentally, you know, it's kind of serendipity, how we can stumble onto something. And I accidentally, some of you are aware, we do these Europe trips with adults and so on and go over, and I was sending out emails, and I included my wife's name, and instead of putting her whole name, I just put her first initial and my last name, and it's at amturner@gmail.com. And I'm sending stuff out, and I get this response, and it's from a fellow in Paris. And he said, Wayne, I'm not a member of your group, I'm a chiropractor in Paris. For God's sakes, quick, send me these emails. And I am so sorry that I mentioned a little bit about myself, and I said, my family, by the way, is actually originated in Calais, France. Do you have any? He said, oh, my God. And then it was this interaction, and it's like, we now realize, a couple hundred years ago, we actually are, you know, our relatives were crossing paths. It was unbelievable. And actually, I'm going to meet the fellow in Paris probably in the next couple of years, so, yeah, interesting. But anyways, that's not why I'm here. I'll get to the point. Most of you know about the Max, I think. It's been a long time since I've appeared in this chamber. I was here probably, oh, my goodness, probably 18 years ago, something like that. We are a society, we are a registered charitable society. We gained that status back in about 1994. We had long discussions with the town when my cohort in crime, Wally Heinrichs, and I would make presentations all over Drayton Valley, the MD, Alberta, you name it. We've come a long way since then. The town was a huge supporter of the Max. Without them, the Max wouldn't be there. As you're probably aware, we paid off our loan from the town last year, so, and we are now officially debt-free. Yeah, that was a nice thing. So when we first started this thing, it was a $1.4 million facility, and we've been adding to it. It's got a lot of nice features in it, I think, but probably most importantly is what we do for the community and in particular for youth. And obviously, there's certain bias towards schools, but we are not directly funded from Wildrose, and I think that's important to point out. Wildrose does provide things like the power, all the utilities and so on, they supply. They do caretaking for us, and they help with maintenance and so on, but that's about it. We've got to look after the rest of the items that come before us on our own. We haven't done a fundraising campaign and per se in many a year, in fact, since we were putting the structure up. And if you're wondering, we were in existence in 9, we started this thing in 93, the idea. It actually came to fruition, and the doors opened in 1999. So we've been around for a while. We are going to have a celebration next January to review what we've done and all the students that have come through, all the adults that have taken part at the events there. And so we're looking at doing a SIP grant, and that's what the letter was concerning your involvement. We would really appreciate involvement from a number of the entities in the community. Brazos contributed, a number of the local groups like Rotary, for example, has contributed. And so now I'm here and hoping that perhaps the town can kind of revisit that relationship with the Max and take part and help us to improve that facility, because it's time now after that, that long period that we have to do some renovations and things like that, and that's why I'm here.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Wayne? Your letter was fairly clear. I'm sorry.
Let's try to summarize what are your future plans?
Certainly, we want to continue to be involved with youth, and actually, what we're trying to do is to make more efficient use of the facility. We had kind of a downtime, and many of you are probably aware of this also, that a year ago, we actually had to shut the cafeteria down during the day, and that was a real sore point and a sad day for us when that had to happen. Funding was tight, we just simply couldn't do a number of things. We'd had a very good relationship for the first 10 years with Wildrose, and things due to, you know, factors maybe out of their control, perhaps, financial issues with, you know, with educational funding, things like that. Ultimately, a number of things were removed as far as helping with us, as far as supporting staff and things like that. So right now, we have no funding, as I say, from Wildrose, and when that occurred, we were kind of, I guess, caught in a bind. We were unaware that they were going to remove a person, our Red Seal chef, the funding for it, which we supplied part of and they supplied the majority of. And we just simply couldn't make it go. The cafeteria during the day, Frank Matic has never earned a profit, ever, and we've fully undertaken that, and we realize that, but we want to provide students with healthy choices at lunch. We want to, hopefully, there's no fast food owners in here, but, you know, we do want to try and provide healthy choices, and we think it's critical that students have access to this facility during the daytime and can make use of what we have to offer. And so we did open up again last September, and we have a good staff in place, we have a pretty good business plan in place, I believe. And so we're moving forward, and we want to really, I guess, push the envelope. One of the things that was pretty exciting when I presented to the Rotary Club, I was unfamiliar with their youth group, and their youth group was pretty keen to get involved with the Max. And so we're going to be meeting with them this summer about some of the things that can happen there. We want to open up and make available, and we always have, pretty well, anything to do with youth, you know, we'll make it available. I'm sure some of the veterans of Drayton Valley are where Teens in Action used to be involved when they're here, they're in the basement. The Max wouldn't have a basement if it wasn't for Teens in Action, when they used to be in the old HW pickup building, that ancillary building. They had to move out of that, of course, I think it was condemned or something, but they came to us, they had $98,000 in their pocket, and said, hey, do you want to take this money? We certainly weren't going to refuse, so the deal was, we was able to put a basement under it, and we gave them a lifetime lease. Unfortunately, things didn't go well with Teens in Action, and they ceased to exist. But that's kind of where we are. We do want to have, you know, the youth involved. We certainly make it available. There's a number of different not-for-profit groups that we will let them utilize the facility at cost. We can't, at this point, you know, undertake too many losses, so we try and run things for those types of groups for no profit. We do our bread and butter, I guess, is with evening events, and that's how we kind of make our payments and pay for things, is with the evening events for adults, whether it's, you know, it's usually focused on arts and culture, whether it's Christmas parties, weddings, concerts, things like that.
Very good. Anything further? Did I miss anyone? Thank you so much, Wayne, for the presentation. Your letter was very helpful, I think, and so what we will be doing is having a discussion together with administration to see what we can do with respect to your request, and I expect you'll hear from us in the not-too-distant future. Sorry, Counselor Wheeler.
Sorry, no. When is the deadline for the grant application?
It's going to be, it's, we've actually forwarded the application already, Farrell, and it's in the process right now. So what they've done, they've kind of worked out a deal that we're rounding up some, you know, matching funds and so on, and that's what we're kind of in the process of right now.
But the grant application, as I understand it, is a necessary component of it, is that you seek funding from others as well, is that right?
Yes, that's critical, absolutely. And by showing your support would go a long ways, you know, showing a successful response from the government.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You, too. Next up, item 6.2, bylaw officer statistics. So we had genealogy, we had the Max, and now we have statistics. So this is awesome. It's getting better. I'll stop for a buildup.
I didn't make the schedule, I just. I believe you all have copies of two reports, one from ITS and then one that I sent you from the program that I've been using. Just, the program I've been using, I've only been using it since April, so it is still a work in progress. I'm still trying to figure it out myself, still trying to make sure that how things go in there are going in properly so that they're captured in a positive way. Oh, you didn't get it?
Yeah, I don't think we actually have the numbers. They're not in our package.
I can go make copies if you'd like.
We could, we could have our next presentation.
Okay, I'll make copies, sorry.
Sure. Or if it's something that you can put on a thumb drive and put up on the screen, perhaps.
You're to make copies.
Okay. All right. All right. So we'll put that one aside for the moment. Item 6.3, humans helping humans, Shake It Up Drayton Valley. Hackhampton. Hmm? Yeah, it's Shaken in Drayton, right? Is that what it is?
Shaken in Drayton.
Yes. Welcome.
Thank you very much, El Gleno. I'll clarify that here in a little while. Thank you for having me this morning, everybody. First of all, we're going to get to Shaken in Drayton just a bit, but I mean, there's a lot going on with Humans Helping Humans this year. This is a big year for us. We've got a very full plate. We have had our selection process open now for about two months. It's open for about another two weeks till the end of the month, so I just want to put it out there, if anybody knows of anyone who would qualify, please encourage them to apply. We have had quite a few applications come in, so we will be selecting two very qualified families to move into these homes. So moving on with that, we are going to be putting a shovel into the ground here, hopefully within the next week or two. Yes, we're just dealing with this, this new thing called Alberta Home Warranty, this new home warranty, and it's been a real challenge for us because we're not a natural construction company. So what we have in place right now is one of the local home builders, CK Homes, is taking that liability on for us. So I mean, that's a very huge thing for them to do that. They've stepped forward, they've taken it on for us. We're in the process of filing all that paperwork. I'm hoping that will be done sometime this week, and then Jen can issue us our build permit, and as soon as that's done, we're putting a shovel ground, we're getting going because we're already a month and a half behind. I'm pretty sure we can make up that time. The last build, we were really slowed down in a drywall state, so I think all that stuff is in place now, so even though that we're going to get started a month and a half later, I'm pretty sure we'll make that month and a half up, and we will still get these families in the home by the end of this year. We'll have them in there by Christmas, so.
Is this one a duplex as well?
This one is a duplex. It will be the exact same footprint as the last one. That one was just a beautiful build. It was nice and simple, it was very spacious. We have made a slight change, we're going to make the bathroom a little bit bigger so you don't have to open the door to turn around, so that'll be bigger. The kitchen will be a little bit smaller. We are going to change the roof a little bit just to give it a different curb appeal, so that will be the only change. Otherwise, everything else is going to remain the same. It was just a beautiful home. The families that moved into it just loved it, the kids had a great time in it, so if it ain't broke, why fix it?
That's right.
So, yeah. So we're going to go ahead with that build here. We actually started yesterday, we had our good friends from Davy Trees come and take on all those great big huge trees for us. They come and did that for free. They were there for about three, four hours yesterday, a whole crew of them, they knocked them all down, shredded up, hauled it all off, so the lot is clear, away we go. So selection process is open. If you know anybody, please, please, please have them apply. Construction's going to be starting right away. If anybody wants to help out, please friend us on Facebook. We will be posting all volunteer opportunities on Facebook, so I'm expecting to see about 20 new friends this afternoon. So please, please friend us on Facebook, and then whenever there's a volunteer opportunity come up, you will be notified immediately. So hoping to see you all there. As far as build day is concerned, we're not exactly sure when that will be. We're kind of shooting for mid to early August. We will be probably asking for a road closure for that day, but when we know the specific date, then we'll file the appropriate paperwork and get that into place. So that will be coming down. So that will be coming down, hopefully, within the next month or so. We'll know exactly when that day will be. So that's our selection. That's our construction. Now, we are planning a first-ever seen fundraiser in Drayton Valley. This thing has been done in Red Deer for the last four years. It's huge. Last year, they did almost 300 or $750,000 in one night. We are taking this on in Drayton Valley. It's, it's, it's like I say, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a first for Drayton Valley. It's loosely based on Dancing With The Stars. We have got all our celebrity dancers in place. And of course, our illustrious mayor, El Gleno, who will be doing the cha-cha.
And it's coming along nicely.
I've, I've seen little snippets of it and yeah, I think you got a good shout at one of those trophies up there, my friend. But we do have, we do have quite a few, quite a few very good big names in Drayton Valley. Pat Boss is one of our dancers, Mr. Floyd Lauer, Mr. Terry Drater, of course Glenn McLean, Bart Eon, Corey Nelson, Stovey, and Jeanette Vatter. And of course, the board convinced me to be one of the dancers as well, so I will be dancing as well.
And I, I'm going to interrupt right here. I've seen much of, of Hack's routine and it is, that is worth the price of admission alone.
If I don't break it, it's going to be great.
Yeah. You guys are nailing it.
Well, we've been practicing since October and I need it. We still have a few more months to get it down. We've gone through the whole routine once already. Now it's just kind of the polishing time. So it's looking good. It's very high energy. Karen, my partner, put this all together. She's actually doing the routine for the Communities in Bloom. They're going to be doing, I don't know if I'm supposed to mention this, but okay. Keep my mouth shut. Delete that, Jason.
Delete, delete.
There'll be more on that to come in the future, so.
Apparently.
Like I said, it's a great, it's, 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 it's a busy year. It's a big year for Drayton, for Humans Helping Humans here in Drayton Valley. So we're looking forward. We're going to get a lot done this year and, boy, like I say, friend us on Facebook if there's any, any way you can help out. We'd sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I have to say with respect to Shaken in Drayton, I was honored to have been asked. I'm honored to participate. You might not have asked me if you'd seen me dance before, but, but for the two minutes that I'll be dancing with Yolanda, it will be remarkable.
That, that will be worth the price of admission. Trust me. And, and I do have a package for you here, Glenn. We'll get together one of these.
Is that a liability waiver?
Pardon me?
Liability waiver in case I break my leg?
Just, 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 just some information, just so that you fully understand what you got yourself into. But we'll get together at a later date and I can go through that whole thing with you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Counselor Nato?
Hi, Hack. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering how, because my kids are younger, but I think it's a great opportunity for them to learn how to help their fellow neighbors. Is there a way for kids to get involved? And obviously, you don't want them on the worksite, but is there, or maybe you do, or maybe there's an area?
What we've done with, with our youth, because we have had a lot of youth that want to come out and actually help build a wall, you know, build the home and pound some nails. So what we've done, just to make it safe for them and, and, and give them the opportunity to come out, is when we build our interior walls, we like to do some of those out on the street, not actually on the construction site. So, so the youth can actually come and participate in building the walls. They can actually get a hammer in their hand, a hard hat, a T-shirt, and pound some nails. Unfortunately, they're not allowed on the actual site, so we actually build some walls out on the street so that they can participate, for sure. We want everybody to help out.
Counselor Bossert.
Good morning, Hack. So good to see you again. Didn't quite get the name of your builder that you're using.
C.K. Holmes.
C.K. Holmes. And what is the street address of the new build?
The 45th Street. The, actually, we've got our two addresses now. It is 5041 and 5039 45th Street.
All right, great. I, I always love watching what Humans Helping Humans continues to do in our community. Recently had an opportunity to go to a housing, a homelessness convention in Edmonton. And I got to brag a little bit about Humans Helping Humans and how we have had a very successful model that, yes, there's been hiccups and there's been little side blocks now and then, but we've, Humans Helping Humans has really endeavored to continue with your mandate, which is building homes for the homeless in Drayton and getting people into homeownership. So I commend the board. I commend you for your continued passion after seven, eight years, is it now?
Eight years, yeah.
Eight years, yeah. And this will be house number six and seven.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think that's wonderful, so.
And I want to thank you as well. You are a founding mother. You're an original board member. You are still on our nurturing committee.
Still helping those people with their budgets every month.
Thank you for that, yes.
I'll be there with my helmet, my helmet, my hard hat on Build Day, so.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, I am too. Thank you.
I've got a hammer with your name on it.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you all so much. And I look forward to seeing you all as friends this afternoon. Awesome. Have a good day.
See you. Pam, Pam is not back. Okay, all right. So we'll have to leave that, the bylaw statistics aside. We'll go into public time is, okay. All right, we'll move on to the decision items. 8.1, Counselor Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one moment, please. This is a bylaw for false, uh, false alarms. With the advances in technology, businesses and local residents have been able to protect their property better using many forms of security-type systems. Unfortunately, with the increase of popularity of these systems, so has an increase occurred in false alarms for emergency services. With the implementation of this bylaw, emergency services will be able to issue a ticket to individuals who are responsible for false alarms. It is hoped that with this new bylaw, businesses and residents will be more responsible for their false alarm incidents, which will ultimately reduce the number of false alarms that are being responded to by our emergency service personnel. This will reduce the number of actual call-outs, which will ultimately reduce the burden on our taxpayers. Therefore, I move that council give first reading to bylaw 2015-09-P, the False Alarm Bylaw.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bossert. Chief Thompson, did you have anything to add to this?
Just to add a few things. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. As Council is aware, the fire service already is able to invoice for false alarms. One of the big problems that we've had in our community, though, is other emergency services agencies are not able to, to issue invoices or to issue tickets at this time. So that's why this piece of legislation is very important, because it will capture all the emergency service agencies so that everyone that is responding to a false alarm will have that option to, to ticket, should there, there be a requirement to do so. So it is an important piece of legislation for us. In regards to a few things about the bylaw, if you look at, on page 21 of 104 in your document, in regards to Schedule A, the fines and the penalties, one of the things that has become clear over the years to us, when we have been invoicing for our false alarms, is that we do have some culprits who take an exceedingly long amount of time to get the message about false alarms. So we, we felt that it was important to increase the third and, um, third or more offenses at a higher cost, so at a $500 level. So we have increased it at that point. In talking to this solicitor, we also used to issue a warning for the first one. In talking to our solicitor, they suggested that we do implement a first offense fee in the event that you can't really determine or distinguish what constitutes a first-time offense. So they, they recommended that we go with a, an $80 fee for the, for the first offense. So that is, those are the, the major changes in the, in the document. Having said that, if I can just interrupt. Having said that, it still gives emergency services the opportunity to issue a warning ticket prior to, to giving a, a first offense ticket.
That was my, I stole my thunder, right there. And that's, that's all right. Any further discussion on this? Counselor Nato?
I think so. I just want to say, it's, it's not for fear for people to be scared to make those calls. It's if you just wanted to go over why, why that happens. Again, I know you've talked about it previous, Council, but just going over why it's important and what, how that draws on the resources when we have to continually go out there. And it's not for people to be scared to make those phone calls. There's a whole other element to why we're doing that.
A lot of the false alarm issues occur, and I want to be very clear, and thank you for, for allowing me the opportunity. We do get calls from alarm companies, which there are legitimate issues. For example, if someone burns something on the stove, or they're having, having an issue with a possible break-in enter or, or whatever. Those, those are not considered to be false alarms. Those are actual calls. And we do get several of those calls. The issues that we have primarily are when we have people that have moved into a rental property and they haven't taken the time to learn how the, the alarm system works. So they don't know how to shut it off if there is an alarm. They don't know the procedures to call into their alarm company if there's an alarm. So usually the first time when we go out, it's more of an educational time for us to explain how these systems work and why it's important. It's important to consider, especially with the fire service, that we deal with a volunteer staff. And every time we do get an alarm, we have to respond as if it's a real thing. So people are being pulled out of work to respond to these types of incidents. So it becomes very frustrating when it's a repeat offender over and over and over again. And so that's, that's part of the reason why we feel this legislation is important.
All right, you want resources allocated where they're needed. Right. Thank you very much. Is there anything further on this? So we have the motion before us. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. We will go back now to 6.2, Bylaw Officer Statistics.
At least now you're talking about enforcement of some kind.
Yes.
Okay, now you have the report in front of you. Sorry about that. Must have been a glitch somewhere along the line that I hit the wrong button or didn't send it as far as I should have. I'd like to look at the I.T.S. report first, which is the chart of numbers that have in front of you. So the very top of that page is the actual chart from the speed sign that I.T.S. put out on 55 Avenue to capture vehicles and speeds that are happening on that road. Because we did have lots of complaints on that road for speeding. So you can see there's quite a few vehicles in the timeframe that it was out, it was out there from March. And he, he just gathered the stats at the beginning of June here. The average speed is 42 kilometers an hour, so that says the vast majority of people are doing the speed limit. But then there are those few on the far column who are not doing the speed limit. So I mean, it, it, there are vehicles out there that are doing it. You also have to look at that right now, too, it's bike season, so we might have some bikes in there that are enjoying themselves. And I don't mean pedal bikes. So yeah, I mean, there are speeders. There's speeders everywhere, but so that's just some of the stats there. And then the, the next part down is for what's happened with the actual automated traffic enforcement itself. So actual tickets that went out in May, there was 1,105 tickets that went out. Bruce broke it down into Drayton Valley residents versus non-residents, just so that you guys could see that, what the differences are. We did have another glitch. Because the government changed totally at the beginning of June, there was a glitch with JOIN because the fee chart was supposed to have gone up, but that was a conservative government initiative. So they weren't sure whether it was still going up, and so there were some hiccups with the change of the government and JOIN not really knowing if we were still going with what had previously been decided. Anyway, so we kind of lost a little bit. We lost 384 tickets that went out as warnings. Still, it's still, you know, the program's still effective because it's still a warning. So there actually probably would have been, you know, 1,500 tickets if we'd, if they hadn't had that little hiccup with JOIN at the beginning of June. And so because of that, we decided that we wouldn't issue multiple tickets to the same vehicles. As Bruce pointed out here, one plate was caught nine times. So they only got one ticket, but they won't anymore from now on. That was just because of, we had to backdate some of the, or they didn't come right away because of the backdating. So there was a little glitch there. So anyway, that's his report there. We did give out 855 warnings in the beginning when it first all started. And I personally have noticed that people are slowing down in the school zones, so it is working. It is working. We're still going to have people that aren't, but it, it is visibly working. You can see people going, oh my goodness, slowing down. So it is making an impact. The next pages you have are beautiful little colored pie charts. This is the program that we talked about and that was purchased for me. Like I said, we, I've only been working with it since April, so I'm still a work in progress trying to figure out what's, how to input the information so it's captured accurately. I do have a support system in place and he's very good. He helps me at the drop of a hat. If I'm having a problem, he will help me right away. It's not like I have to wait days or weeks to hear from him, so that's very good. So this, these charts here show the incident types, which basically are complaints and permits. So the only thing that this chart doesn't show you are the daily tasks that I might do, like a meeting or council, if I come to council for a period of time, or if I'm, you know, working Canada Day or working the triathlon. That doesn't show on here. That's, this is just complaints that I deal with or information giving. So since this is my first kick at this, I'm not sure what you would like to know.
These are from January 1st, is that?
No, no.
Have I got that right?
I, when I just did the, to do the report, it says last year, it gives you a period of time. I just clicked the last year button. So it's only from April 14th.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So the, the, the chart's only actually capturing from April 14th till last week.
Okay. That's interesting. That'll, that'll require a bit of time for us to adjust to the presentation of format of that information, but I think it's very useful and we appreciate the effort that you've gone to. Counselor Wheeler has a question.
Thank you. Everything on here looks good and is very easy to understand, except I'm just wondering what boarding house would mean? Like what kind of actions would fall into that category?
Well, we have some issues right now with people that are renting out rooms in their houses, multiple rooms in their houses. And so between myself and development, we're trying to figure out how to deal with that because we have a bylaw that basically states you can't have a boarding house. So that's what that, and then the issues that spawn from that are parking, obviously, because now we have 10 people living in a house instead of only three or four, five, maybe. So it, that's what that is. So we're having some issues with rental properties that are renting out rooms.
Anything further? Counselor Long?
Good morning. Just regarding the photo radar, the very first day the tickets came out, my household received two. So I wasn't driving either time, but I do get to pay for one of them, which is awesome. And we went out and looked in the correct, that actually was a school zone they were in, so we now know. I did hear, though, a rumor out there that some people had received tickets for going two or three kilometers over. I suspected that it was one of those stories that gets out there, but that's not the case?
No. No, that's not the case. There are set parameters and they are not two or three kilometers over.
Counselor Schuler.
Thank you. This is very good. I appreciate everything you've done to put this together for us. I also have a question on the, on the photo radar. You'd indicated to me that only one ticket per plate was issued. Did, in the case where the one we had nine different, was caught nine, nine times, did they receive some sort of notification that they were, that they'd been in violation nine times?
They probably got the other eight warning tickets as warning tickets. They only issued one actual ticket, but the rest would have gone out as warnings. And then I know Bruce had talked about when they get that incident, they usually let the local R.C.A.P. know the plate so that they can be aware of what's going on, so that they're watching.
That's excellent. I just want to say, I'm glad, I'm glad that you were able to point out that you've seen a reduction in, in the speed in school zones. Because that was the whole intent of putting the photo radar forward, was, you know, for safety. And if people are slowing down, that really indicates to me that, you know, it does work. And it, I'm glad that we've gone this route. Also, you know, from these stats. glad that we've gone this route. Also, you know, from these stats, and the number of tickets that were issued, especially to the Drayton Valley addresses, it really shows me that this was something that was required. And, you know, council was on track when they decided to go this route, you know, saying that is, you know, for safety, and listening to the public saying that we have a problem out there. And, you know, we were able to, hopefully, this will help. And over time, the number of Drayton Valley addresses the tickets are going out to are going to drop substantially. And non-resident, well, if it's the first time through the community, they'll learn for the next time they come through the community.
When you're driving, you're supposed to be paying attention to the signage around you.
That is true. Thank you.
Indeed. Once or twice is a lapse. Nine times is a disturbing trend.
Yes, it is.
Counselor Natto, and then Counselor Bossert.
My family has received one as well. Not me.
I'm glad they know.
Not me. And I was sworn at about that darn town of Drayton Valley. That wasn't the word that was used, but I reiterated, where did you get the ticket? And it was in the school zone. And so my sympathy wanes substantially. I am hearing all of them that are within my circle of people that have spoken to me about it, have all said they received them in the school zones. And that is very telling. I have not heard one person that has received them in other areas of town, but in the school zones. And a lot of them have said, I didn't realize. And I know it's around 50th, around 711, that the school zone extends as far as it does. So that has really been an education for a lot of people, because they just simply didn't realize it went. And I said, well, there's signs posted. You know, they're advertised where they're going to be. So again, my sympathy wanes a little bit. But when I think of my kids in my school zone, and some of these tickets are double what the posted signage or posted.
Speed limit.
Yeah, it's, I don't feel bad, quite frankly. And if you want to complain, feel free. My number is public for people to complain about things. But if they're going to be in school zones and speeding around children, I have no sympathy.
Yes.
So.
And I think part of the problem is we become lackadaisical. You know, you've lived in the community for years. You've always driven that road. You've never really done the speed limit because you've never been caught speeding. So it's just opening people's eyes to the fact that, yeah, I need to do 30 kilometers an hour in the school zone.
Absolutely. But that one around Eldorado, the one concern that was being brought forward is that it should be 150 meters from a school. Is that correct?
There is, I know we did send you guys out some, there is a distance, and I can't remember exactly. It's 150 to 200 meters.
Okay.
Somewhere in there.
And the concern was that that does seem like it exceeds that. So that, there may be some questions on some of those coming forward. And if we could just shore that up, and if it does exceed that, then they're absolutely correct. And that's fair. So I just wanted to have that, if we could just kind of investigate that a little bit, and then all those other ones.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sounds as if Counselor Natto's household had an educational opportunity. So that's great. Counselor Bossert?
Thank you. My household has not had that opportunity yet.
Excellent.
So I'm very pleased. Just a question. In these first two months of warnings and tickets, we have a set number of personnel, a set number of cameras. Is that going to change, or what we started with is what will continue as far as cameras, personnel, time out on cameras? So we, hopefully, will see this number decrease, but it's not a high number because we've had a high concentration of capture.
Nothing's going to change. The only thing that will change it is weather. Obviously, if there's wicked snowstorms, it's going to change how it's impacted. But other than that, no, nothing's going to change. It's going to run the same as it has from day one, hopefully with less glitches through the rest of it.
Well, as has mentioned, I am very pleased to see that even in the first two months, we've seen a reduction in speeds. We've been seeing captures in school zones of high speeds. And of course, our first, our absolute first priority is the safety of our kids. So if this is what it's taking to slow people down, then I think we've made the right decision. I hope to see that these numbers decrease so that people actually have learned that they need to slow down. But thank you for this report.
I'm sure they will decrease. And of course, our town being very oil patch driven, as the oil patch comes back into fruition again, the numbers might go up, because then we'll have an influx of more people.
And drivers. Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. Will they be moving the radar statistics sign anywhere else and using it in different locations, or is it going to stay where it is for a while?
No, I think he is going to move it. I'm not sure his timeframe, but he did mention that he was going to move it. I think they like to leave it in one spot for quite a few months, just to get a, like, it's already been there four months, so maybe just a couple more, and then he'll move it to another location.
Two observations that I have, based on page one of the statistics, very large sampling size, number of vehicles monitored, that's good. It means that it's working, it's capturing vehicular movement. Actually, three observations. One is that the majority of people are certainly well within the speed limit on this particular street, and it's a problem area that people sometimes use as a drag strip. The most startling observation is that it is absolutely reprehensible. It's an abomination for people to be driving over 100 kilometers per hour on that street, or on any street in our community.
In towns.
So my advice to those people who, I mean, this isn't simply, in my judgment, and I'm not the one who gets to hand out the tickets, this isn't speeding. This is dangerous driving.
Yes.
For which people can be incarcerated, I might add.
Yes, they can. No, that, I mean, that's well over the 50 kilometer over the limit mark. So yes, you're getting into the dangerous driving.
Yeah. So I thank you for your presentation. Was there another comment, question? Counselor Natto?
I just wanted to echo that comment. I travel that route a lot because my kids are Aurora. So, and I see everybody soon as that, it's amazing. Soon as they start about two blocks away, you can start to see it, and everybody hits their brakes. And I've actually had a lot of positive feedback that people are happy about that, because it does, you don't notice when you're tending to creep up. In a school zone, you know, like that's, you know that's a school zone. But in that area, you do tend to, oh, I'm going around the corner. But when, yeah, when I saw the 133, and we had that incident of that house being hit on that corner in that same area, and obviously, some of those changes needed to happen before somebody gets hurt or killed.
Yes. The speed signs out, not like my trailer, which is only out during daylight hours. This is out all night. So this could be happening at, we don't know when this is happening, Bruce, within the light beam. I mean, it could be happening at 2:00 in the morning. I'm pretty sure it's not happening at 2:00 in the afternoon, but you never know.
Regardless, there is no safe time.
No, no.
To drive 133.
No, don't get me wrong. I'm not saying there's a safe time. I'm just saying, you know, we don't know exactly when this is happening time-wise.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. It's very thorough, and we look forward to future. All right. I think before we proceed with the decision items, maybe if council desires, we'll have a short break. We'll call a short break. Five minutes. 8.2 Counselor Natto, Community Standards Bylaw.
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of the attached bylaw is to establish community standards and regulate, control, and abate nuisances and dangerous and unsightly premises within the town of Drayton Valley. By establishing these requirements in the form of a bylaw, administration is better equipped to ensure the activities, lands within the town are maintained to a consistent standard, recognizing that each property has the potential to impact those parcels around it. The town currently has a nuisance bylaw from 1986, which is limited in scope and does not accurately reflect the type of community we wish to maintain. The attached bylaw is intended to expand on the principles of the 1986 version. Should first reading be given today, the attached bylaw, administration, to the attached bylaw, sorry, the administration will proceed with public consultation and provide a detailed report of the community feedback at a future council meeting, at which time council may be asked to give second and third reading for adoption of the bylaw. Any amendments to the bylaw after first reading will be noted in the report to be presented to council. Therefore, I move that council give first reading to Community Standards Bylaw 2015-08P.
Thank you very much, Counselor Natto. One thing before I call for discussion on the motion is I note that the copy attached to the agenda package is a draft, stamped draft. I expect the final copy, there will only be one definition of sidewalk, because there, the definition of sidewalk appears twice in this draft. That's just for information. It doesn't require an amendment because it's a draft. So we have a motion before us. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Long?
Thank you. Certainly, I think time to review a bylaw that's been around since 1986. But given the length of this document, I know we're doing a consultation process, which I appreciate, but I wonder if it's possible, as part of that, to sort of pull out an edited highlights version for publication, either in the newspaper or online even, sort of a one-pager with the key points that people need to know, because I think a lot of people will not get to page 26.
No, I anticipate that'll be part of the, part of the public information component to this process. And well, well put. Any further discussion? Counselor Schuler?
Yeah, as with any bylaw, you know, doing the first reading, you know, then allows for that public input. And I really, really hope that the public will take a look at this bylaw and, you know, give their input. It's one that, I agree, needs to be updated. It is a very, was a very old bylaw, and needs to be updated. And I really hope that the public will take the time to take a look at this and what it actually means to them, and means to the community, and, you know, put forward some, you know, some constructive criticism, if you want to go that route, you know, for it. And we need their input. So I'm kind of asking the public to make sure that they take notice of this one.
Right. Anything further? All right, we have a motion before us. All in favor? That is carried. 8.3 Counselor Long, Repealing Bylaw 2015-12A.
Thank you. Administration has reviewed the current bylaws in place and reviewed the requirements for each to remain in effect. The following bylaws are being recommended for repeal. Bylaw 9501 to authorize the execution of a master agreement for intermunicipal services agency, adopted March 1, 1995. Bylaw 9619 to repeal the bylaw established in the municipal planning commission, adopted September 13, 1996. Bylaw 9707 regarding the numbering of buildings within the town of Drayton Valley, adopted May 21, 1997. Excuse me. Bylaw 2001-15D establishing the intermunicipal planning commission, adopted January 30, 2002. Bylaw 2006-13D establishing the joint subdivision and development appeal board, adopted May 3, 2006. Bylaw 2007-06D amending bylaw 2001-15D IDP, adopted August 8, 2007. Bylaw 2007-07D amending bylaw 2001, hopefully everybody's catching this, 2001-15D IDP, adopted December 12, 2007. Bylaw 2007-27D amending bylaw 2001-15D IDP, adopted December 12, 2007. Administration recommends that the attached bylaw 2015-12A be given three readings today to provide for the repeal of the foregoing. Therefore, I move that council give first reading to bylaw 2015-12A.
Thank you, Counselor Long. Any discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Counselor Long?
I move that council give second reading to bylaw 2015-12A.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor? That is carried.
I move that council consider giving third and final reading to that, to bylaw 2015-12A.
Any discussion on this motion? All in favor? Counselor Long?
And finally, I hope I move that council give third and final reading to bylaw 2015-12A.
Thank you. I think I know the answer. Any discussion? No? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. It's a good bit of housekeeping, and I appreciate the work that administration went to weed through some old and unnecessary bylaws. 8.4, just before I go to Counselor Wheeler, Counselor Schuler?
Thank you, worship. Due to at least a perceived, if not an actual community interest in this, I will be removing myself from this discussion and vote.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Wheeler, I'll ask you to introduce the motion, and then I will go to Mr. Nedu.
All right. So administration has been asked to prepare a policy regarding the use of push notifications via the town app. The town recognizes the value of being able to reach app users on an urgent basis and to provide important messages. The attached policy establishes that the town will only use push notifications in the case of an event of an urgent nature, which affects a large portion of the population.
Mr. Nedu?
We're asking for some time to review the policy. It needs further exploration in terms of our partners who are with us in this program. And we would like to make some amendments to it and bring it back to council for approval.
Right. So what I'm hearing is a desire to table it. And so I would entertain a tabling motion. Counselor Long? All right, all in favor of the tabling motion? That is carried. Thank you. And so, looks like Counselor Wheeler's off to get, Counselor Schuler. Thank you. Item 8.5, I'll do this slowly. Item 8.5, Counselor Schuler, Appointment of Weed Inspectors on Page 56 of the agenda.
Thank you. Just half a second. There we go. As per the agreement made on December 10, 2014, well, this is nice. Between the two municipalities, the town of Drayton Valley has requested Brazzo County to provide weed control inspection services within the town. It is the desire of the parties of this agreement that the level of weed control within the town of Drayton Valley and Brazzo County is consistent, accurate, and equitable, while protecting the environmental conditions of all parcels. In accordance with Section 7, subsection 1, and 9 of, excuse me, I'm having a technical difficulty here. 9 of the Alberta Weed Control Act, municipal inspectors under 7, Section 7, subsection 1, a local authority shall appoint inspectors to enforce and monitor compliance with this act within the municipality. Municipal inspectors' joint authority, so under section 9, an inspector appointed by a municipality may, with the consent of the local authority of another municipality, enforce and monitor compliance with this act within the other municipality. Weed Control 19/2010. The following weed inspector appointments were made at the May 19, 2015 Brazzo County Council Meeting. Lisa Rebel, Tara McGinn, and Natalie LaForest. In order to provide weed inspection services, town of Drayton Valley is being asked to appoint the above individuals for the 2015 season. I therefore move that council appoint Lisa Rebel, Tara McGinn, and Natalie LaForest as weed inspectors for the town of Drayton Valley for 2015, as per the Alberta Weed Control Act.
Thank you, Counselor Schuler. Any discussion on this motion? All right. This is a routine item that we do every year. Routine, but necessary. So, no discussion? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Thank you. Eight point six, Councilor Bossert, policy for early childhood development center.
Each year, the childcare operational board presents to council for approval any new or revised policies for the early childhood development center and its family day home agency. The following policy is new to the childcare center and is being presented to council for approval. It is the early childhood development priority placement of children. As attached, I recommend that the town council approve the new priority placement of children policy for the early childhood development center as presented.
Thank you, Councilor Bossert. Any discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Eight point seven, Councilor Natto.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, the childcare operational board presents to council for approval any new or revised policies for the family day home agency. The following policies are either new to the family day home agency or have seen significant revisions and are now being presented to council for approval. Administrative records policy for children, backup care, caseloads and monitoring, communicable disease and health, enrollment policy, fees for service, home and safety checklist, hours of care, incident and investigation procedures, medication policy, parent involvement policy, performance appraisal, provider training, and provider termination. Attached is a full listing of all policies for the early childhood development center and family day home agency. Therefore, I move the town council approve the new and revised policies for the family day home agency as presented.
Thank you, Councilor Natto. Any discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Item eight point eight, before I go to Councilor Long, I will excuse myself as a result of the pecuniary interest as defined in municipal government act, I'll call on Deputy Mayor Schuler to chair this portion of the meeting. And it would be nice if he would have left me, that one needs to be done. Councilor Long, I believe this is yours?
I'm up and ready to go. Thank you. On June 11th, 2013, council approved a subdivision of four industrial lots from the remaining parcel as phase two B of the Westview Industrial Park with the lands legally described as northeast 1849 seven west of the fifth meridian. The applicant has met all town conditions and has not yet required registration of the four lots shown as phase two B. Council approved the first extension at the July 16th, 2014 regular meeting of council. As the applicant requires an additional time to register the lots, he is therefore requesting a one-year extension which will take him until June 11th, 2016. Administration is recommending that the applicant be given an additional one year for completion of the subdivision with no further extension in keeping with previous resolutions of council wherein extensions were limited to two per application. Therefore, I move that council grant the one-year extension for subdivision application, DV 1305, to June 11th, 2016 with no further extensions.
Thank you. Questions? No? Actually, I have one. Is it fairly normal that we would have a second extension? It indicates that, you know, we've done it in the past, but is this a normal procedure that we, something that happens regularly?
I will answer in Jen's place because unfortunately she is sick and can't be here. She asked me to speak to it. Yes, in the past, we have allowed two extensions. It's been a question of whether or not that's too much. In this case, because the conditions applied to both, how do I word this, both stages of this phase, they really have been met. So now it's just a matter of the landowner registering, so we're not as concerned in this case. If they were having outstanding conditions, then we'd be a little bit more concerned about granting an extension and requesting that perhaps they just have to reapply. But in this case, the conditions have been met, so it's just a technicality of the registration. It is something that we are looking at though in terms of policies, practices for administration. And in discussion with council, what we see is an appropriate period of time because you do have that initial year. So do we grant one more year to meet the conditions or are two years appropriate? I'm rambling. We've done it in the past, in this case it doesn't, we didn't have a concern with it. But we will be looking at it for future and establishing a consistent practice.
That's, it's good to see that because having, you know, the original in 2014, you know, it does seem a fairly long period of time to grant, you know, someone to bring forward their subdivision, so they either want to go ahead or they do not, but, okay, good enough. There's no other questions? We have a motion on the floor, all in favor? And that is carried. We'll now bring in our...
All right, we are nine point oh, information items. Nine, we have nine point one, the May 2015 economic development report from Councilor Fredrickson. The nine point two, April 2015 Brazzo seniors foundation board minutes. Nine point three, March 2015 Pemena Physician Recruitment and Retention Committee Board Minutes. Nine point four, the Drayton Valley Brazzo County Fire Service, April 2015 statistics. And nine point five, the Drayton Valley Brazzo County Fire Service, May 2015 statistics. Could I get a motion to receive those items as information, please, Councilor Natto? All in favor? That is carried. Oh, whoa. Too efficient. Go ahead.
Just in the past, we've always had generally the department present at the beginning of our council meeting the fire services statistics. And since that hasn't been done, but they've been included in information items, I think might be prudent to have our fire chief give us a, you know, breakdown and how things are going within the fire department for the public's sake since they don't necessarily see these.
Chief Thompson?
That's correct. That was my intent for my report that's coming up, I'll include that in the report portion.
He's on it, that's great. All right, item ten point oh is department reports. Planning and development, is Jen? Oh, okay. Planning and development will be deferred until next meeting. Ten point two, engineering and transportation. Ron Fraser?
Yeah, thank you. I probably don't have a lot to add from last time other than, you know, we are proceeding with the 50th Street paving and that'll be heating up shortly. Forty-third Avenue, we've got the tender in and we're planning to go to tender shortly on that. And the Beckett Road extension, it's nearing completion, so I'd say things are going fairly well on the construction front.
Any questions? Nope? Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Ten point three, community services, FCSSS, and sustainability. Annette?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, counsel. Quite a few things here on the go, I'll just quickly run over some of the things happening within each of the different sections of the department. Just a reminder, tonight is the, what they call the free money party. This is the RESP signup for families. Again, there are grants up to $2,500 available to families if they're eligible from our government's. And our local banks will be on site this evening from two, actually starting two in the afternoon until eight o'clock at the Rotary House to welcome parents and to talk about access to this money that is available for educational purposes in the long run. So again, great opportunity for families if they're looking at starting an RESP for their children.
Can I interject here just because I may not remember if I wait until the end? Do we have something on social media and our website, all of that for, okay, good?
Yes.
I thought I had seen something, I know it's been on the sign at 50th and 50th, right?
Yes, it is, on there as well.
Good.
Yeah, we try to use all the forms that we have available within the office for everything that we do, so if at any time you hear something somewhere and you don't see it within our social media, let me know and we'll make sure it gets there as well.
Right on.
With the schedule a little different this year within the Omniplex, of course, the administration and programming staff at the Omniplex are wanting to encourage people to bring in their teams and their individuals for ball hockey, so different ages, different levels of play. So if anybody's interested, please get in touch with the staff at the Omniplex. The pool, of course, several different activities happening at the pool. Every Friday night, they have their free swims sponsored by Tim Hortons. And in the event that people do not realize that if they are an operator of a boat, I'm hoping that by now they know, that if they are an operator of a recreational powered watercraft in Canada and if you're 16 years of age and older, you are required to get your operator course and the accredited training is included in the pool, so again, encourage people to take that training and the exam to give them the proper certification for it. The pool's also hosting lifeguarding, emergency, national lifeguard, and aquatic emergency care, so this is happening through July, so again, if anybody has an interest in those activities, do so. They're also doing a little show about lifeguarding and what it takes to be a lifeguard, so they're doing a little showcase of a national lifeguard program in terms of what the lifeguards actually do in their positions at the pool. And that's happening on July the 10th. July 1st coming up very shortly, Canada Day, new location, well, we've had it there before, but Omniplex, just because of the remediation work on the grounds within Rotary Park, we are going down to the Omniplex for Canada Day for this year. So again, the activities start off with the free pancake breakfast from eight until 10:00. Parade still happens, 10:00 to 11:00, but this time people have to go just a little bit further as they migrate down to the Omniplex. So 11:00 to 3:00, all of the different events at the Omniplex and then, of course, Taste of Drayton Valley, which is also very popular from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. And of course, fireworks at dusk. So that's happening there. Otherwise, just working on all of the various capital projects, following through with some of the recommendations to help out with the Omniplex with respect to agreements with DV Thunder, which is coming along very well, as well as the Curling Rink, and also looking at the fitness center in terms of fitness manager coming on board, so making headway with those items. But now I have the privilege of introducing somebody new to our organization and I know that the council agenda says community services, FCSSS, and sustainability. This is not only my pleasure to introduce Danette, but also to do a handoff to planning and development as the sustainability coordinator position will fall underneath that department and I think it's an excellent thing. Of course, the sustainability coordinator will still be engaging all of the departments within sustainability, so it's not as if it's something where, no, it's left undone. There will still be involvement from my department, as I suspect from every single department within this organization. So there are a number of things that our coordinator will need to do and with council's adoption of the most recent sustainability plan, there are a number of action steps that need to be undertaken, so certainly her task is to sort of lay out a work plan together with the sustainability committee. So it is indeed my pleasure to welcome Danette Moulet to the town of Drayton Valley. So Danette was born in, born, well, raised in Nelson, born in Alberta though, okay, but raised in Nelson, B.C. and of course in Calgary as well. She graduated from Mount Royal College with a BA in Applied Policy Studies. She later pursued a certificate in sustainability management through UBC. She has completely, or recently completed, fairly recent as well, a master's in resource and environmental management through Simon Fraser University. She worked as a conservation specialist for the Alberta Wilderness Association before going, moving to B.C. In B.C., she pursued work in program creation and development for the real estate board of Greater Vancouver and UBC. She also worked in environmental nonprofit, conducting research on sustainable consumption and production. She's completed an internship in the planning department with the Regional District of Central Kootenay. She's worked as a TA, teaching sustainable energy and materials management at Simon Fraser University. And I'll leave the very last line because she does want to say, and I'm sure that she'll appreciate the fact of saying just a few more things about herself and looking at how she is approaching her position as our sustainability coordinator. So, welcome, Danette.
Welcome. Thank you. Hi, so I've met with you, you I haven't met, it's very nice to meet you. So yeah, I'm brand new here, just came here a week and a half ago and I don't think I've ever been to Drayton Valley before, but I'm happy to be here so far. A very nice place, very, very beautiful. And yeah, so I've done a few things, kind of all to the board. I have been recently involved with Fairboat Canada to change our federal electoral system, that's kind of my big thing right now that I'm working on. And always kind of different initiatives in my hometown, where I just came from, that I'm still kind of involved in even though I'm here. Yeah, so just a bit about me, I try to lead a very sustainable lifestyle, it's been very important to me for a very long time, I'm very interested in health and bringing community together and creating community and positive relationships in the community and I'm very interested in wild food and natural medicines and yeah, I've traveled quite a bit, so I have a lot of, I guess I can bring different perspectives or I have respect for other kind of viewpoints on things that comes from traveling and yeah, I have a variety of interests, I love to be outside, I do a lot of things outside, I like to grow a garden and yeah, I'm excited to get involved here. So thank you for welcoming me.
Well, once again, welcome to Drayton Valley. We're not only happy to have you with us, but I think lucky to have you with us based on the extensive resume and background and obvious interest in all things sustainability-oriented, so we were really glad to have you. And does council have any questions, comments, et cetera? Councilor Natto?
I know Pharoah will say something, so I'll sneak in right before. We met yesterday and we had our first sustainability meeting with you present and Ron and I appreciate where, as an organization, we're going and that you're in the planning and development department and engineering department, I think that makes sense as a community. And I'm excited because I, although I know your passion about environmentalism, you also are very aware that sustainability means more than environment. And I think that came across yesterday, so I'm very excited on how you kind of move us as a community forward, so welcome.
Thank you. Likewise, I was also excited to see that the community saw sustainability as more than just an argument.
Yes. Councilor Wheeler?
Yes, thank you, welcome. It's been exciting to actually have you here and talking face-to-face time over Skype. I was wondering if you could maybe explain a little bit about your masters to everyone, I just thought that was a really key feature that you focus on and applies to our areas.
Sure, yeah, I've actually, I talked to Ron about potentially presenting my thesis results that I'm publishing right now to whoever's interested because it is really interesting work, I think, for everybody. So I was in a research group that studied climate change, renewable energy, but I kind of diverged a little bit and did kind of a social study. I did study Canada wide, we did one in the States as well, but I did use that for my thesis work on why Canadians aren't motivated to live more sustainable lifestyles and sort of been done across Canada, every province and territory and yeah, really, really interesting results. So, you know, things to do with money, lots to do with money, lots to do with convenience, a little bit to do with values, but not that much, you know? Like I think that, I just came from B.C. and I think that B.C.'ers kind of have this idea that they value the environment more than Alberta or some of the other provinces and I don't think that... or some of the other provinces, and I don't think that's true. I think it's just a different way of expressing our values. And money is always a factor too. And so yeah, my work is really, really interesting. I came up with some surprisingly interesting results. And I think it's going to help me in this position, actually.
It certainly sounds like it, and that'll help our community as well.
Yeah.
I look forward to that. I'm particularly interested because you mentioned, and all of the things you mentioned are sustainability-related, including the Fair Vote Canada work, which is very interesting to me because I'm a political science nerd. So we'll have to talk further about that. Anything further for Danette? All right, thanks again and welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Where are we now? Protective Services, Chief Thompson.
Good morning again, everybody. Just as I had mentioned, I'd like to take a bit of time with council to go through the stats for April and May. As you can see from looking at them, we were very busy for those last couple of months. During the month of April, we did have 34 calls. Nine of those were fire call related. And when I talk about fire calls, those were not the wildland, grassland type incidents. We had three structure fires, which involved, one of them was unfortunately a fatality. We did end up, we also ended up having a dryer fire as well as another mobile home in which the attic caught fire. So we had some busy times with structural fires. We also had two vehicle fires in which the vehicles were totally destroyed. We also had a hay bale fire, which is currently being under, which is currently under investigation. And we also had a fire pit that ended up getting away on the occupants of the home and burning down a fence and almost the neighbor's property as well. So that was a little bit of a concern for us, especially when it was in a trailer park. We also had a burn barrel incident, which again, the fire got away from people. This is out in the county, obviously, and threatened a vehicle and some property. We also had an industrial fire out at a battery site in which a storage shack burned down. In regards to grass fires, we were just getting into the heat wave. So we only had five grass fires for the month of April. We had four motor vehicle collisions. One of them involved unfortunately a pedestrian that was clipped on a highway. We had a single vehicle rollover. And we also had another interesting one in which a vehicle was stolen and it was involved in a chase and it ended up in a crash. The two occupants of the vehicle were arrested. We also, again, had another collision at the Boston-Pete's intersection, which an individual had turned left and was struck by another vehicle. Moving on, we had eight alarm calls for the month of April. Five of them residential, three of them commercial. Two of those were legitimate calls, even though we call them alarms. They were legitimate calls where the residents of the occupant of the house needed some help from the fire service. And to wrap it up for April, we had eight miscellaneous calls, which involved a power line down. As council can recall, we did have high winds during the month of April. So we had a lot of problems with power lines. We also had a ruptured pipe in a residence. So we assisted the occupant of the home, an elderly lady, with helping her clean up her basement. She had a flood in her basement. We also performed a Star's Landing. We also had a roof fly off of a building, which was a dangerous and serious situation because of the high winds. We had a sprinkler system malfunction in one of our large box stores, which created a fair amount of damage. When a sprinkler system explodes, you get a lot of water in a hurry. So that was another issue that we were dealing with. We also had an odor complaint, an EMS lift and assist. And we rounded it out with a residential gas leak, which was a legitimate natural gas leak in a residence. So that completed the total, for a total of 34 calls for the month of April. In the month of May, we were even busier. We had 42 calls in the month of May. Again, we had nine calls that were actual fire calls. Two of those calls were explosions. And I want to clarify what I mean by an explosion. A lot of people think when they hear that word that it's an explosion that levels the building and like you see in the movies or you see on TV. There are other things that can explode that are smaller type incidents. We had one incident down at the Omniplex, which was a malfunction of one of our boilers down there. Again, it was minimal damage, small, small type of explosion. We also had another explosion in a local commercial building, which was again, a result of an electrical problem, not a huge explosion which leveled the building. We had two industrial fires. Both of them were at gas plants and both of them involved structures of one shape or another. One was a separator incident and the other one was a storage shed. We also had two more residential fires. One was again, another attic fire. We also had a fire involving a stove that had caught fire and had burned part of the, part of a kitchen. We had two power line incidents, which were transformer fires that had caught fire. And we also had a camping trailer that had caught on fire and burned down. In regards to grass fires, we were much busier in the month of May. We had 12 wildland grass fires. One of them was a large fire out in the Lodge Pole area, which was an E S R D call. And so we just were there as a mutual aid assist to assist E S R D. We had five motor vehicle collisions, two of them involving ATV rollovers. We had a light truck rollover, a tank truck rollover. And we had a car rollover, which involved a younger driver who was going through some personal issues. We had 12 alarm calls, eight residential and four commercial. All of those were legitimate false alarms. So we have been sending out letters to those particular businesses as well as the residents. We had four miscellaneous calls. One was a power line down, another Star's Landing, another EMS lift and assist. And we also had an RCMP assist with a stolen vehicle that had been put in the river. And then we had to go into the river to make sure there was nobody in the river, or in the vehicle in the river. And that rounded out the 42 calls for the month of May. Moving on, some other things that we are working on. The fire service, as council is aware, puts on two kids camps every year. They are both sold out and we have large waiting lists for both of them. They tend to fill out as, or fill up as soon as we advertise them. So those were, those were filled up in a hurry. As well, we're also trying something new. We're trying a youth adventure camp for kids ages 13 to 16. It's a two-day affair, July 22nd and 23rd. We are trying to get our older kids involved in something that's exciting and something different. So it's a test trial for this year, just to see where we're at and how it goes. And if it's successful, we'll expand it more next year. So that's what we're working on for this year. Any questions from council?
Excellent. Good luck with the kids camp and the youth adventure camp. That's, those are great. It was last year, I remember coming to see some of what goes on. It's, I think it was their graduation day. It was quite a, really a blast. Sorry, did you have a, who was it? Counselor Bossert and then Counselor Nato.
Thanks for your report, Tom. You noticed that there are, you mentioned that there were a couple of Star's assisted landing. So are those rural Star landings or sometimes when Star's comes right into town that you have to assist with that? I live right at the landing pad, so I hear her coming in. In fact, she's come in twice in the last two days. But do you have to assist with every landing?
Not with everyone. It's, a lot of it depends on weather, wind conditions, time of the day. Usually in the evenings or if the weather is not great, the Star's crew will ask us to assist them landing at the hospital. If it's a nice, if it's a nice day, it's in the middle of the day, it's fine. Then they have no problems landing on the pad by themselves. The ones that we responded to, this one, were rural ones where we had to land Star's right on the highway and in a field. So that's where that happened.
Being well acquainted with the Star's helicopters, I think we're very blessed to have it come into our community. But it comes quite a bit. My other question or my other observation is that during these last two months, the majority of the calls or the percentage of the split of the calls is about 65% is county and 35% is town. Is that a regular or a fairly standard percentage split that you see in the number of calls that you receive?
When, when, I want to caution council, when you look at the stats, when we split it up county versus town, I include that, I don't, we don't see the fire department as being town versus county. We're together, we're a joint thing. So when I look at the stats, I look at the stats for the whole organization as a whole. So when we're looking at county stats, those are not necessarily calls in which Station 3, which is the headquarters here in Drayton Valley, respond to. It could be calls that Station 1 in Lodge Pole responds to, Station 2 in Breton responds to. But I put them all together because we're one group. We're not, we're not a separate entity on its own. When I, when I do look at the stats and I separate those out, we generally see a 50-50 split in the amount of calls, town versus Station 3 county calls. So it's roughly a 50-50 split.
Counselor Nato.
I just had a question, Tom. A couple weeks ago now, so June 13th, 14th, that weekend, I think everybody reported hearing a very loud bang in the middle of the night. And I've never heard an actual report of it or I woke up and I know pretty much everyone in the town heard it. But to this day, I've never heard a reasoning, just wondering if you knew or is just kind of a random event that everybody heard a bang in the middle of the night?
Probably what individuals heard was a transformer explosion and fire, which is part of the stats that I include, that I'll include in the June, June results. It's, when a transformer explodes, and basically all it's doing is just short-circuiting and it catches fire and then it goes out. But it makes a horrific loud bang and people think that a bomb's been dropped in the community. It's a very, very loud sound and that's, and I, a lot of the ones, we get a lot of people phoning in after an incident like that has happened, saying they heard an explosion or they heard something like that. And generally, that's what it is. So probably, I'd have to go back and look at the stats, but probably that's what it was.
I've heard one outside our office several years ago because a crow or a raven was pecking at it and blew himself up along with whatever it was. But it was loud, yeah. So thank you very much for, for your comments. We'll go to Legislative Services now, Shandra. Nothing, because all your work is right in front of us, right? Economic Development, Communications and Marketing and Information Services. Am I leaving anything else, Ness?
We attended a meeting with the mayor at Weyhouser. Then we had a meeting with Telus on the Internet of Things or the machine-to-machine opportunities, which I'm sure Counselor Wheeler will expand on. And we've had economic development meetings and some events that are significant that will take us forward. And I'm sure the Chair, Counselor Nicole or Counselor Long will expand on that. We had the F C M come into town and present an award to the town for our work at Nicaragua, which was a significant program. And then I also attended the program closure at F C M and a review of the program that we were engaged in in Nicaragua. Very, very positive outcomes from all the programs that they follow throughout the world. Also some good news that they announced that day that the federal government has already provided funding for another five-year program. And they're hoping that Drayton Valley will be a partner again. And I said, yes, if we apply, they will consider us for whichever region we wish to go to. And that, I will be bringing that to council for consideration before we make the application. On the information side, the Town App will now stand at 754 downloads. We're entering Phase 2 of the app, which we're very excited about. And we will be going live on Canada Day if everything goes well, as technology tends to sometimes throw a wrench in at the last minute. But at this moment in time, the Phase 2 app has two parts to it. Reporter problem, which will enable citizens to report issues to the specific departments. And then there's also the Business Directory, which is now available on the app and the website. So you can, you can pick out a business and/or a category and you can see all the businesses that appear in that category. It's quite comprehensive. I know we had some problems with the webpage, but that was a glitch because the test site had accidentally gone onto the website and some information that was old was there, but that has been corrected. Our annual report is ready. We'll pick it up on the printers. And it will be in homes next week, at the latest.
Very good. Thank you very much. Counselor Nato.
Ness, and I just had a question on the Business Directory. Are the ones that are included in the Business Directory the ones that have business licenses? And that's how we're able to monitor that or how are they included in that?
The Business License Database has been used as the basis for inclusion in that. So everybody that's in our database and is currently up to date has been included in that Business Directory.
Excellent. And I know you alluded to the fact that technology is occasionally imperfect. I myself have never had experience in that regard. So I'll take your word for it. We'll go on to Council Reports. Sometimes, you know, it sounds funny up here, but, yeah. Thank you. Council Reports, Counselor Schuler.
Well, thank you, worship. And due to one of those technicalities that happen from time to time, I'm having one of those today as my phone has decided to lose my entire calendar. So I'm showing that actually I'm not here today. So I have a short report and I apologize if I do miss anything because I can't go back to check to see exactly what I did every day. Couple items I do want to report on. F C M at the beginning of June. It was a very good conference, as it usually is. This is the one conference that municipalities, you know, have the opportunity to get together to help determine, you know, the direction for lobbying of the federal government when it comes to items that affect municipalities across the country. Edmonton did a very fine job in hosting it and I want to commend them for that. There were a lot of interesting sessions that were there. And I'll outline those a little, in more detail, I guess, coming up in my conference report, which I'll bring to council hopefully very shortly here because I'm coming to the end of my period when it has to be done. So I'm hoping to have it done shortly. Brazu Seniors, again, things are moving along very well with Brazu Seniors. And there's really not a whole lot to report. The minutes from a previous meeting are in there. The renovated section- The renovated section is now complete, and we will be moving people into the new renovated rooms shortly here. They are phenomenal rooms, they are slightly larger than our standard room that we have at the lodge, just coming down to, I guess, new standards that are being brought forward for, you know, the size of washrooms, that these are all definitely handicap accessible, which is very nice. They have very large windows, so they're very bright, and actually, very, very nice rooms, so I think we're going to have a fight to, for residents that will want to relocate to a newer room, and Stella will have her challenge ahead to determine who will get in there, because we have kind of determined that we will give priority to those requiring So that'll be moving forward here very shortly. Again, just want to report that the loan that was taken out to do the expansion in the new wing is, my understanding, it should have been now paid in full. So it's ahead of schedule to pay it off, which is good, we're going to save some money on interest due to that, and what we had done is, we had enough money sitting in reserves that we paid the loan off early, and we'll replace that money once we receive the requisitions from the municipalities to get, put the reserves back into place. So that's a very positive thing, and people will see next year that their requisition will go down, because there will not be that portion for the loan, so a saving for everyone for next year from Brazu Seniors. The other, the other thing I want to touch on is the committee that myself, Counselor Naddo, and Counselor Long sit on is what we're currently calling the Legacy Project, and I made reference to it earlier in council today, and we are starting to move forward with that. We've got two different phases, I guess we may want to call them, and the first phase is to capture all of the newspaper articles from the Western Review and its predecessors digitally that have not been done so far, and we feel that is important, because there are some copies of the paper that the Western Review have that are one only, and if anything should happen to that copy, then we are out of luck, and we'll have a tremendous loss. So we are going to be moving forward on that very shortly. The second phase includes the, again, capturing digitally people's stories of Drayton Valley, and the history that they've been able to have since, in the time that they were here or still are here. So that's going to be moving forward, we're going to be meeting with various groups, and anyone from the public that would be interested in assisting, we are going to be having a meeting September tenth, I believe it'll be seven o'clock, and most likely in the building here, that'll be determined a little bit later, we will have-
We'll have that advertised.
We'll have that advertised, and, but just to give people a heads up, I think this, I'm very excited about this project, I think there's a lot that can be achieved, and we have some very interesting community members that have stories that, you know, what people just, I think in some cases, just will have a hard time believing that they went through what they went through in creation, and, you know, of Drayton Valley and the area. So I do encourage people to come and get involved in this one, because we won't be able to do it without the public. And other than that, wish everyone a happy Canada Day, and please come out for the festivities, and hope to see everyone there. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. Yeah, FCM I was at was wonderful this year, there was a lot of networking opportunities, and I think some good ideas coming back, so I'm sure our reports will be coming on the next probably council meeting agenda. I did want to give a shout-out to the ECDC, they had an open house, and it was wonderful, they had, the fire services were there, showing the kids around, they had a bike safety, the kids could bring their bicycles, make sure their helmets were done up properly and stuff. I just think that it's one thing to have a daycare for your child, to have care, but it's another thing to have an actual development child center, where they are teaching and developing your children, and the things they do there for them is just unreal, so I want to say thanks. And I was at the Beehive AGM, and same thing, they are working very hard to be happy, healthy, and productive members of our society. They do have twenty-five clients, which is a decent number in town to have, and wonderful to see them out and about, so. Also, the PCN had their barbecue, their big grand opening, and someone else will touch on that more, and just wanted to update on for the Physician Recruitment and Retention Committee, we did have our meeting, and the last doctors that we just toured are, have chosen Provost, but they did have a very tough decision between Drayton Valley and Provost, they emailed twice, asking about questions, and trying to confirm, and trying to make decisions, and that, they said Drayton Valley looks like a wonderful community, and the committee did a great job taking them around, they brought their daughter, who was about a year and a half, all the way over from South Africa for a two-week tour, which is hectic and busy, and we're seeing all these different towns and stuff, so it was really neat to see them take her to the Splash Park and hang out, and have a barbecue at the house, just to really show them what Drayton Valley's like, so, yeah, it's been good. June twenty-sixth is Hug Your Cat Day, so for anyone who has a cat, please give it a hug. And welcome Canada Day on July first for all the festivities. Yeah, that's it.
That's weird. In a good way.
The library's doing a whole thing on it.
Wow, that's impressive, okay. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Just seeing who's awake.
Counselor Bossier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I'm sad that I don't have a cat anymore. All right, June third, of course, we had the RCMP open house, I think we may have touched on it on our evening council meeting that night, but I'm always so impressed with how the community engages with our emergency services on that open house day. There was countless classrooms of youngsters there, and everybody was just really enjoying themselves, and we had the opportunity to show off the best of our community as far as emergency services, so kudos to all the men and women that work hard to keep our community safe. We also got to cut the ribbon on our new street sweeper, so nice to see that out, keeping our community clean. As mentioned, June fourth to seventh was FCM in Edmonton. I found this FCM very engaging this year, had a lot of opportunities to speak up in forums, which isn't typically like me, but I got to mention a number of times some of the great work that we're actually doing in our own hometown, that sometimes goes unnoticed or unsung. Our Women in Government Mentorship Program that we had a couple years back is an excellent model, and has been replicated by other communities. I think for a community our size, we did an amazing job, so thank you especially to those that spearheaded that. I also got to highlight some of our homelessness and our housing initiatives here in Drayton Valley, and just to engage again with other councillors and mayors from other communities of like size or smaller, and just share the best practices that we have in our communities. So I was really glad that I got to go, my report will be in within the next two weeks, I promise. On June ninth, we had our Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Strategy Team. We continue to move forward with having more volunteers sign up for training to be volunteers for our MAP program, which is continuing twice a week at the United Church, Mondays and Tuesday evenings, we're open. I have to mention the great support we have had from our RCMP detachment in supporting our MAP program here in Drayton Valley. And again, it's something that's being, or we're having other communities come to us, asking us about how we are pulling this off, and what our challenges have been, what our successes are to this point, and La Duke and Devon have come to us asking for our support in them launching their own MAP program, so it's good work that the team there is doing. On June eleventh, I attended my second-only Community Foundation meeting, which this group of people is just the whirlwind of our community, they're very busy, the list of agenda items was long, but top of the agenda was the introduction of their new executive director, a young lady named Erin Hepper, and she will now be responsible for the day-to-day operations of Community Foundation. The biggest item for the meeting was, of course, the DV one hundred Bike Race, that's on September twelfth, they're looking for as many as forty corporate teams to come out and do a three-way rider relay, and there's a thousand-dollar incentive there for the winning team to donate a thousand dollars to a charity of their choice in the community, and their goal is to have two hundred and fifty riders this year, which is, in my opinion, very attainable, because the event has grown substantially since it started just a few years ago. So lots of great ideas coming out of the Community Foundation. June eleventh, sorry, June twelfth, I attended the Long Service and Retirement Dinner for Wild Rose School Division, and I was amazed at how many teachers or administrators had served Wild Rose for more than twenty-five years, and I believe there was ten that were thirty or more years, and a number that were retiring, including our superintendent, Mr. Chelly. A very dedicated group of people who work hard for the education of our community, for the youth of our community, so I was pleased to be a part of that. On June seventeenth, I attended, wearing two hats, the ground opening of the Primary Care Network here in Drayton Valley, which is located right next to eighty-eight, right down the street, or right across the street from Independent Groceries. They're housing mental health workers, dietary workers, local practical nurses, they have space for incoming specialists that come in on local bases, it's just a beautiful facility. Their mandate currently is working with mental health and with multiple diagnostic patients, people with complicated medical histories. They are also working towards a mandate for obstetrics and maternal care. And Marty Prentice, the executive director there, has done a wonderful job gathering a strong team around himself, and I believe that it's going to be a great asset in healthcare in our community. And I, as a member of a charity, also get to be a tenant in there, so I get to work in there myself, so I'm quite pleased about that. On June eighteenth, I was supposed to attend a Healthy Coalition Meeting on behalf of Counselor Fredrickson, unbeknownst to myself and a number of other people, that meeting was moved, and so I have missed it, but the meetings for, the minutes for it will be forwarded. And as of, on yesterday, June twenty-third, the Poverty and Reduction Strategy Team met with members from the FCSS and La Duke Emergency Shelter Society about our MAP program, and we were able to sit down with these ladies and tell them our history, and show them our facility. So as I already mentioned, it's something that other communities are watching, that we're doing in our community. With all that, I would like to end with a congratulations to Counselor Fredrickson, who has been blessed with the newborn baby girl named Ruth Robertson, Ruth Roberta, and we wish her and her husband Ryan all the best with their new little one. We look forward to meeting her, and I also look forward to seeing the community out in spades for Canada Day. We always have a great day, and it looks like the weather's going to be awesome, so come on out with your flags and enjoy celebrating the holiday.
Thank you very much. I particularly want to acknowledge your comments and your involvement with the MAP program. Homelessness is a serious problem in our community, as well as many others, as you've pointed out. We are a model in the area of homelessness and poverty research and reduction, and it's time that our community and others approach it seriously, so we're doing that. Now, Counselor Naddo.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just highlight a couple of things, if I may, rather than go through the big list. We've had a couple of communities in Bloom meetings, and I just want to highlight the event again, on August twenty-seventh, down at the Omniplex, we are showcasing Footloose, ConocoPhillips, the original Footloose, that's pretty good, because that's the coolest one. ConocoPhillips is sponsoring that, so it will be a free barbecue, they will be manning the barbecue down there with their employees, so free barbecue for the community. Alberta Pork Association has donated two hundred dollars, so we can go buy bacon, get it? So you can have bacon on your hamburger. And Shaken with Drayton will be doing a little brief dance to showcase what they're going to do.
Some of them.
Some of them, yes. There will be a little instructional component as well, that one of the dance instructors will teach to the group, which will be nice, and a surprise that day as well, so it'll be a great family event. It will be held in the Omniplex inside, and it's just a great free community event, so come, bring your picnic blankets, bring snacks, although there'll be snacks provided, and it'll be just a great family event, so welcome to everybody. And I'm not making the mayor and the fire department do any watermelon eating contests this year, but you might have to maybe play Minut to Win It with some of the kids. And Counselor Wheeler will rock that, she already has done that. We've also had our sustainability meetings, we've had two of those this month, but we've already discussed that. Legacy meeting, I'm very excited about moving forward with the project, and that's been highlighted as well. We've also done our strategic planning meetings, and we're moving forward with the community plans. And the last but not least, Economic Development Committee, we are looking at the RFU that's come back, we had asked that to be circulated to council, but I don't believe it has been on what we're going to move forward with in having a community profile done, so all of that is in conjunction with the new Economic Development Officer that I believe has been shortlisted, there are a couple of individuals that have been shortlisted, so we're expecting that position to be filled in short order, hoping for, we've given the mandate for a short turnaround time for the community profile, and start getting that information that needs to be done for site selectors and so on, they're wanting to come to the community. So getting a lot of that research done, so that when that EDO comes, there's a lot of that background, and they'll work in conjunction with that. So again, we'll have that circulated to the rest of council, because that's a discussion that needs to happen promptly for direction, as well as with the branding proposal, so all of those are moving, maybe not quite as quickly as we would have hoped, so we're hoping there's a little bit of urgency in that, if we want to get it started this summer. So those are the two highlights, and I want to also congratulate Brandy and Baby Ruth. We're looking forward to Snuggles, so hopefully she comes and brings that baby soon. Yeah, so congrats, and I'll see everybody in June. Oh, and I did want to give a shout-out to the Drayton Valley Neptunes for last weekend. I moved my hat from being a dance mom to a swim mom now, and that was only my second swim meet, but the organizers did a great job, were able to showcase our community to six other communities within our region, it's awesome. There is no event like a swim meet, I have to say, where everybody gives total strangers high fives for doing their best and supports everybody, it's just a, it's a feel-good event, and I'm sure Tom could echo that. It's a lot of work, though, but it's great to see when we can put those kinds of events in our community and showcase what we do, and the rain held off, so I just want to give a shout-out to the DV Neptunes, and the parents and the volunteers that went into that, because it was a good day.
Yes, excellent, thank you. Counselor Long.
Thank you, I'm just going to pick up on a couple-
I'm just going to pick up on a couple of things that haven't already been mentioned, rather than keep us here longer than we have to be. On the 9th of June, we had a library board meeting. We're now working on a new plan of service. This is essentially the strategic plan for the library, and it's a statutory requirement under the Libraries Act that it's reviewed every three years, I believe, so that's coming up, and at some stage it will be an invitation for, I think, the mayor to be involved in a smaller group to look at some of that stuff, the mayor or his designate, I would suggest, but that will be coming up in later in the year, October, I think, September, October, so something to watch for there. On the 15th, Yellowhead Regional Library, the news from there is that since 2009, the funding per capita has been at $4.30, and that will continue for one more year at least, so good news all around. I believe that's the lowest anybody in the province charges too, so they're, an organization that offers a good deal of service to folks in the community for a very low cost, so a positive thing there. Otherwise, the Legacy Project, I share the excitement that's already been mentioned. I'm glad we're finally starting to get our act together on that one. It's been a slower process than it might have been, but I think we have a plan of action now, and all we have to do is act on it, so we'll get that going, and as Nicole already mentioned, the economic development thing, been a little difficult in the absence of an EDO, but hopefully the EDO arrives and we have the tools and place for he or she to get going fairly quickly, so that I will leave it there.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Yeah, just hearing the comments about the Legacy Project, I'm very encouraged. It's time and effort well spent, I think, to document the history of our community. Just a few things I'll mention. Of course, early in the month, bit of a highlight for Drayton Valley's participation in the Municipal Partnership Program sponsored by FCM and SEDA. I know Nessan mentioned earlier it was to acknowledge our involvement with, most recently with our partnership with Madagalpa in Nicaragua, but to acknowledge our involvement in the program for some 18 years now, which is extraordinary, and it is one of the ways in which a community of our size can give back a little bit internationally. And I have to say, having had a small bit of, small hand in this last partnership with Madagalpa, the appreciation and recognition for Drayton Valley is evident throughout all of the people and the, you know, the signage and all of that associated with the project they undertook, so it was very heartwarming and a demonstration that the program works. June 4th through the 8th, of course, FCM Conference in Edmonton. My report is done, people. Important to get those reports in on a timely basis. And I expect it'll be in the next minutes or the GMP, the following GMP, not today. Yeah, I thought I should mention that. I'll mention it again if you need me to. Two things I want to highlight in particular associated with the FCM Conference were the study tours. I was able to attend one on business incubation that occurs within the city of Edmonton with Startup Edmonton, and the affordable housing tour, which Councilor Bossard and I both undertook, gave some very good and relevant ideas for how we might approach our affordable housing problems in Drayton Valley. Of course, as I mentioned, FCM was June 4th through 8th. June 5th, however, I drove back to Drayton Valley, and I was so pleased to speak at the Holy Trinity Academy graduation. And then, of course, the Frank Maddick graduation later in the month, on the 19th. Congratulations to all our high school graduates. June 9th, of course, I had a meeting with the school board chair of Wild Rose School Division, just to try to ensure that our efforts towards achieving the bus hub are on track and moving forward in a timely manner. Let's see, June 10th, meeting with some officials at Warehouser to discuss some of their operations. June 15th, I was fortunate to receive an invitation to attend the throne speech in Edmonton, which I did, and had some useful discussions with both government and opposition members thereafter. It was a productive afternoon in that regard. June 18th, I attended the mayor's caucus meetings, and I came away with some practical and good suggestions from mayors of other communities as to how to approach some of our local needs and concerns here. Let's see, I think that I'll leave it there. I want to wish everyone a happy Canada Day. I won't be here for Canada Day this year. I'll be out of province, visiting some family members, one of whom is gravely ill, and thereafter having a few days of holiday, but I'll be back the 13th. And so I encourage everybody to participate in Canada Day events. It looks great, and thank you to administration for your efforts in organizing that, and thank you to council for your participation in it. And I too want to congratulate Councilor Fredrickson on her new addition, and in 18 years, we'll have another taxpayer. So, thanks so much. Take a motion to adjourn. Councilor Schuler, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you.